Neighbors who are tuned in as well. I'm the president of the Ginnipar Residence Association and I'm pleased to be able to meet with you tonight. Show what these candidates are really likely to be like when they function for us. The Ginnipar Residence Association has had an over forty year tradition of being able to provide direct access for our citizens. To interact with those people who would like to represent us. We don't make endorsements, but we do think that it's important to have that face to face interaction. This year is our first year of having those interactions be virtual, so I appreciate all of you being here. We will start with a four minute opener for each of the candidates. We have people here from both the second district and the third district because Ginnipar encompasses both of those areas. So we'll start with the candidates from this, from the second district. Each of you will have four minutes. My husband will be keeping time. And then we'll go on to questions after that point, so. I'm going to be rotating who starts first so that we even that out. Mr. Spinks, would you like to go first tonight?
Sure, I just have to get my camera. Sorry. Somebody else is ready.
Tavoris, while you work on that, let's go to Catherine. Catherine?
Hello, my name is Catherine Jordan and I'm running for city council in the second district. I grew up in the Richmond area. My dad taught at VCU and my mom at the University of Richmond. But I've also lived in a number of other cities, other capital cities and other university towns like Durham, Charlottesville, Dallas. And I'm back here as an adult and thrilled to be a real Richmond-er this time. I always thought I grew up in Richmond, but uh, we were across a kind line in Hanover. So I'm a real Richmond-er this go around. And I'm running because I want someone on city council who's going to fight passionately for our schools. That's how I started following city government, going down to advocate for the school budgets. I also want someone who has a background in planning. We have a lot of master plans right now that are going to require critical oversight when we get into the implementation phase. So Richmond three hundred, the James River Master Plan, RBA Green twenty fifty. My background is in urban environmental design. That's my graduate degree. That's what I did professionally before being home with the kids. And then I also want someone representing the second district who has experience leading in the second. So I was very active with my neighborhood association. I served as chair of the FDA's Parks and Trees Committee. I served as president for a year and I also served as grants co-chair. And then those roles, I really got to know the neighbors, what their issues were. You know, what the city was capable of doing to respond to issues that we were having and what they were not able to do. And especially working with the parks and trees, I just saw how under-resourced the city was. Monroe Park, you know, the irrigation was broken. There's only one irrigation person on staff at the city. So I'm looking to take those experiences, the passion for funding for our school, professional background in planning and overseeing master plans and the relationships that I've built with city departments, with department heads and with our elected officials. To be the best representative I can be for you and your neighbors. I'm going to make sure that you guys know what is going on. This will be my only focus. My kids are tweens right now and uh, if anyone else has tween girls, you know, it's not cool to be hanging out with your mom. So this is the perfect time for me to really focus on the city. And we have a great chapter ahead of us, so I'm enthusiastic. It's been a really hard year for everybody, but I do think the city is ready to turn the page. I would be honored to represent your neighborhoods and, you know, and yeah, I'm up for the challenge. So I would like to save as much time as possible for the questions because I think that's really where people get to know the candidates. So I'll turn it back over to Tavoris at this point. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Catherine. I think y'all can see me, I think.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you. So I am Tavoris Spinks and I am running for a second district city council. I'm a proud fifth generation black Richmond-er. I grew, I grew up poor in the East End, in the working class household. And I became the first in my family to go to college. I went to VCU. I've rented my home in the fan for twelve years and frankly, I have a, I have a very deep and strong love for this city. All of my family's here. I love the city so much, but I also understand vividly that there are flaws in the way the city works. Too many hardworking folks are struggling to, due to systemic inequity, underfunded schools and a government that does not prioritize residents' day-to-day needs. I've also spent twelve years working as a bankruptcy and consumer protection specialist where I advised countless Richmond families on foreclosure and evictions. Every time, sorry, every day I saw the absolute devastation caused by inequity in our communities. I've been involved in local progressive politics for seventeen years to empower our community, first with the VCU Democrats and then with the Metro Richmond area Democrats as president of both. And I was the second district chair off and on for four years with the Richmond City Democratic Committee. And, and for the last five years, I have worked in healthcare IT. I manage a team that helped, that developed software for nurses so that they can deliver better care to Medicaid and Medicare patients. So that, that's sort of a bit about me and why I'm running. I'll just take a few, a few seconds just to say some of the issues that I care most deeply about. First is the, the sort of, I think sort of the easiest lift because it's fairly cheap is, is, you know, using the people's money wisely. The, I believe that, that city, that city hall doesn't function in the way that it should when it comes to taxation, both sending out the bills for real estate and property taxes, for collecting those taxes and, you know, and for processing payments. I believe city hall doesn't work when it comes to getting permits. And I'd also believe that city hall has, doesn't work when it comes to prioritizing, as I said, day-to-day needs. And, and at least in the case, in the second, we have a lot of issues with sidewalk repair, areas where we need more sidewalks, potholes and road fixes, basically. The, I believe the school should be fully funded. Right now, folks will say that their schools are fully funded and because they, they're fully funding the requests, but we know for a fact that the, all the needs aren't being met. So if their requests were for all the needs that are, that are needed, then I, we would see that the schools were, aren't getting enough money. So I'm sure there'll be questions about that and I'll talk about funding mechanisms as part of that. The, the other thing I think is super important is I, I believe that climate change is real and it is here and that we need to do everything we can to mitigate that. And there are things that we can do at the city level to mitigate a rising climate. That includes adding and incentivizing solar, making it easier to get permits to put solar on a house. I believe that the city's fleet should be transitioned. When, when they transition out of, when old vehicles get retired, basically, I think the city should look at purchasing electric vehicles in their stead and also increasing the, the availability of charging stations. I guess the, with my last bit of time, I just want to say, thank you all for having me. I really appreciate it. And, you know, I've enjoyed knocking on doors. Yep, thank you.
Okay, our next three candidates will be candidates for the third district. We'll start with Mr. Willie Hilliard. Willie? Unmute yourself. There you go.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Willie Hilliard and I'm running for city council in the third district. I'm a Northside native. I grew up in the Park community. Eventually graduating from what was then Marshall Walker High School. I've been doing the work of community engagement probably for the last fifteen years within the city. I am the executive director of the Historic Brooklyn Park Collective, which is an asset-based community development group that focuses on civic engagement and neighborhood empowerment. Some of the work that we've been doing and I, and you have to excuse me. I always say "we" a lot instead of "I," so that's just a habit. But some of the work that we're doing has been in racial equity within the city as far as economic development. I've done work in housing affordability and bringing healthy food access to the city. I've worked very extensively in the schools, volunteering in every school and I've got presence in all of them. I am a member of the mayor's education compact team. So we were the arm that actually was working, you know, that did the work. So we put in some legislation that the, that the mayor supposedly it will turn into a program. We will see. Again, we've been doing that work. I have given away probably thousands of turkeys towards our school system, turkey dinners, volunteering. I've also given away probably thousands of backpacks, school supplies for kids. I've been doing this work again probably for the last fifteen years and my work has been collaborative. We've worked with several civic associations already, who I remember are our team. And what we do is basically sit down and collaborate, engage and empower people. And that's the work that we've been doing and we continue to try to do this again, like I said, for the last few years. My, my style is, of work is collaborative. Like I said, I'm the type of person that we will sit down together as a team and figure it out. Nothing will come down the pike in this community that we won't discuss first. When I say I go into city hall, we go into city hall and just that's the way we work. Nothing will come down this pike. I believe in participatory budgeting that we would discuss, you know, because we're taxpayers and I think that for the taxes that we pay, we don't get our bang for the buck and we should have more of a say. So we also believe in property tax reforms. Again, working in housing affordability, I've had relationships, again, with all the schools and a working relationship with our current school board rep. So I'm very involved in a lot of different things that's going on within the city. But a lot of people may not know that because I'm just a worker. So I'm never on the front lines trying to promote myself in any way. That's just not me. I'm about doing the work of the people. And I just want to be the voice for the voices in this community and actually give us a chance to have a council person that actually works for you and works with you. And that's just a style of what I want to be, is a champion of your causes. So that is me in a nutshell. Pass it on to Blake.
Thank you. Our next third district candidate is Anne Francis Lambert. You've got four minutes.
Good evening. Can everyone hear you? Can you hear me? Okay, okay, great. I remember, my name is Anne Francis Lambert and I am running for third district Richmond City Council. I remember growing up on Graham Road near Battery Park and my childhood neighbors and I would play outside every day like clockwork. My family then moved to Ginnipar neighborhood in nineteen eighty-five where I attended All Saints Catholic School. My family was the first black Catholic family to move into the Ginnipar neighborhood. I learned how to rollerblade and ride a bike all throughout the third district. My father, the late Senator Benjamin J. Lambert III, was a huge education advocate and was my example on how to best serve the community and work across party lines to get things done. In twenty ten, after leaving Capitol Hill, I then worked for a healthcare policy partner of a law firm and after five months I was laid off. That experience was devastating and I owned two properties at the time in two different states. The whole housing crisis was crazy in two thousand and ten. When I returned home, I realized although Richmond had changed, many troubling things were still the same. There was loitering on Chamberlain Avenue, sidewalks where my father's office is located was still in need of repairs. It just had been three years ago when the block was renamed after him. The sidewalks were overgrown, the weeds litter lined the curves, trash cans, the bus stops were overflowing. I knew when that I had to begin to speak up for the residents of North Jackson Ward, that they needed representation. I realized that the community was crying for help and our representation was not doing a good job in making sure that our communities are living together in a loving way. And I then knew that I could not sit on the sidelines whimpering and complaining because making progress requires action and ideas. I believe that my work experiences as a city council liaison, a senior policy analyst for the
Lost the sound.
Third district a better place and to continue the legacy of my father instilled in me and my brothers, which is to carry out community service and to offer civic responsibility. In doing so, I will make Richmond a better place where all kids, regardless of zip code or skin color, can have a chance at a better life and a decent life filled with opportunity and hope. I not only have the skin in this fight, I have heart and soul. My vision for the third district is a safe, united community where we can live, work and play. And moving back to Richmond, I am the first black certified female drone operator with a business in the city of Richmond. Upon moving back, I realized that I wanted to be able to teach a skill to the kids, to youth in our communities, give them something to be able to make some money. So that is why I'm running and I thank you so much for allowing me to be here and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Norma, you were muted, but I'm assuming you were handing the mic over to me, correct?
You're, you're correct.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you to Ginnipar Residence Association for hosting this forum and providing me the opportunity to share a little bit more about myself and why I'm running for city council to represent the third district. My name's Elaine Summerfield and I've been living in Richmond for the past eighteen years, so almost two decades now. Past twelve years living in the third district. I'm a resident of the Bellevue neighborhood where I live with my husband and our ten-year-old. So he attends Holton. So I'm a Richmond Public Schools parent and volunteer. And I've spent my career here really working to build coalitions through nonprofit organizations, create public-private partnerships, all in an effort to build opportunities for individuals across the community. Now I'm taking my skills, my knowledge of the issues, my passion for making a difference in Richmond and putting that to work in a new way through service on city council. And right now, it is a pivotal time in Richmond. You know, there are a lot of opportunities before us. And we need, we need to be thoughtful about who our city leaders are going to be. My, a little bit about my background, I pursued a master's in public administration, knowing that I'd pursue a career where I'd be making a difference for others. And ever since I got to Richmond, I believe I've been doing that. I've done that through efforts such as being a co-founder of HandsOnRVA.org, Hands On Red Richmond, where thousands of people get connected to the community and learn about issues through volunteering and service. That's HandsOnRVA.org. I also spent over twelve years working in the community through the Community Foundation where I partnered with nonprofit leaders and changemakers that were on the ground doing work in issue areas such as education, youth development, access to healthcare, housing affordability, workforce development. So through this experience, I got to know a lot about the challenges facing Richmond, the policies that impact people that are living here, as well as the incredible resources and people who are working so hard to address them. And, you know, I, I believe that we can take so much of what we have accomplished together and make an even bigger difference as we look at not just project by project or program to program, but real systemic change to address these longstanding issues in the community. And there are, you know, a lot of longstanding issues that we're working to address. My priorities boil down to what I've been hearing from my neighbors and residents in the third district. People want a city government that is responding to requests for services, really efficient services that are budgeted forcibly and responsibly. People and myself included, we want to be sure that Richmond Public Schools is supported and supported in a way that make, we can have every student have the opportunity to thrive, no matter where in the city they live, no matter where in the third district they live. We also, you know, I think you all as Northsiders would agree, like, we have wonderful, wonderful neighborhoods, vibrant neighborhoods in Northside. There's still a lot of room for, for some improvements.
Thank you, Elaine.
Oh, that was, all right, all right. Well, thanks. We'll get into more as we, as we continue our conversation. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to go through a series of questions with each of you having a chance to respond for one minute each. And then I will rotate who I start with. What experience do you have dealing with budgetary matters and what was the size of the budget? Start with Catherine.
Thank you. So it's, that, that question is, we cover a range of sizes. So early on in my career, I did fundraising for UT Austin School of Architecture and UVA School of Engineering. So I was responsible for raising money to fund our, our programs. Those budgets, I want to say I started a new fund that, with corporate giving that came in over a million dollars. And then fast forward through some other different careers. After graduate school, when I was working in New York City at Cooper Robertson and Partners, the budgets were more of the two hundred and fifty thousand range. And that was for design work for projects like a new arena for the New Jersey Devils in Newark. And then after that, I was at Duke Medicine as assistant director for campus design and sustainability and participating in very large projects. So new hospital expansion.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah, thanks.
Tavoris?
Well, so I didn't get to say the intro. I also worked at the General Assembly. So I dealt with the Commonwealth's budget. I worked for then minority leader Frank Call and he was also on the Appropriations Committee. So we, we dealt with a lot of budget amendments in the state budget as well. Professionally, right now, I work in healthcare IT, as I said, and I think my last, my largest project was two years ago and that was a budget of thirty million dollars that was used by our team to implement a new care management system for six different states. And then I think honestly, the most important budget, budgets experience I have is that when I was working at the law firm, I would see people's pay stubs and do a household budget for them. And I know how much it costs to live in the city. It's a lot. And it, folks are, folks are struggling. So that, that's, you know, I have a wide range of experience with budget issues. And I, I think, I don't know how much time left, so I'll just, I'll just end there. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anne Francis?
Hi, yes.
One minute.
Okay, my previous experience as a city council liaison, working under the former councilwoman Dolores McQuinn, worked with the city budget. We handled everything for the seventh district at the time, as well as working for the Office of Intergovernmental Relations with Kelly Harris. Then we worked and developed the legislative agenda for the city of Richmond. One of our major projects that we were trying to get funded is the CSO project, which is over a forty million dollar project that we lobbied the General Assembly and federal funding for that project. Is why we have problems with our sewagees, sewage right now. So working with budgets has been my experience, working with city government. And I believe I'm, I am the only experienced candidate that has worked for the city. So I had the experience to start day one. So yes.
Thank you. Willie? You have a minute. You're still muted.
Sorry. Probably in some of my previous employment, being in management and restaurant industry, I think probably the largest budget we had probably may have been a couple of hundred thousand. But recently, we've dealt with budgets for the improvements that we had on Brooklyn Park, which was a million three. And we had to really get in there and work with that to kind of trim some of that because there was a lot of excess within that that really didn't go anywhere. So a lot of those budgets. But I've sat in and probably all of the budget meetings for the last few years from city and the public schools, you know, which leads us to advocate every year for more funding for schools. So I'm very in tune with the budgets and how they work and seeing them on a regular basis.
Thank you. Elaine?
Most recently, for a couple of years, I was the executive director of a nonprofit called Richmond Opportunities, Inc., where the budget I managed, it was in a startup phase and I managed and raised the funds for a budget of about six hundred thousand dollars. Before that, I was with the Community Foundation where I managed a grants portfolio for several different funders. Each of the funders had a different funding amount, ranging from a couple million a year to seven million a year. And through that work at the Community Foundation, part of the role was also through due diligence, really combing through the budgets of any entity that was requesting funds. So that would include, you know, projects at VCU Health System to, you know, a small after-school program. So a wide range of budgets that would be assessed to determine, you know, the viability and health and wellness of that organization. And then before that, I also was administrative director of a community health center that had a budget of about five million dollars.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, we'll start with Tavoris. Question is, many current and former council members have told me that being on council can easily be a full-time job. What if any other work responsibilities would you be juggling if you were elected? You have a minute. You're muted.
You're muted.
Tavoris, you're on mute.
The embarrassing part about this is I was about to go into a whole thing about how is, how I'm an IT professional. I can't unmute. Okay, so yes, for the last five years, I've been an IT professional. I currently, I'm contracted with a company that serves, that's called Tech Systems. And the way that works is, you know, I can sort of spend my hours where I need them or where they need me. And if needed, I can cut back my hours and that's kind of my plan. We're trying to, I'm trying to get a feel for how this is going to look during the time of COVID. But frankly, I understand that the, you know, that our current council person, Ken Gray, and, and then before her, before her, Charles Samuels, and definitely before him, Bill Panely, were all very hands-on and in, in the areas responding to residents. I understand that from a constituent services standpoint, I perform those functions for my member in the General Assembly, again, Delegate Frank Call. And I, I think I have a grasp of what that, what that means. And if needed, I'll, I'll cut back my hours at work and I expect that to happen.
Time up. Anne Francis? You have a minute.
Okay, can you repeat the question?
The current and former council people have told me that council can easily be a full-time job. If elected, what other work responsibilities would you be juggling along with your council responsibilities?
Okay, all right, my bad. Yeah, so I am a small business owner. I have my own drone business. I perform the services of aerial photography and cinematography. I also help manage properties that my family owns here in the city of Richmond. We have two commercial properties, one in the VCU area as well as another in North Jackson Ward. So I do property management. But yes, I am a small business owner, so I have the time and flexibility to be able to be the council representative that the third district needs and provide that accessibility that we need.
Thank you. Willie?
Yes, I am a barber by trade. That being said, I'm self-employed. So I make my own schedules, so I'm always accessible and available to my constituents. I think that's how I've gotten to where I've gotten by being available for folks whenever they call. So I will still be that way, you know. Again, if you need me, I'm always there. Again, we will sit down as a community and work without whatever issues we have. So I'm always accessible. I'm right around the corner. I live, work and play in the third district. So I'm here twenty-four hours a day. You can always reach me.
Thank you. Catherine?
Well, as I alluded to in my opening comments, this would be my full-time job. I'd be putting in overtime and I'd be doing it because it's what I love to do. I already listen to city council meetings and subcommittee meetings. I'm on the Green City Commission currently. That's really my only other civic activity at the moment. But no, I would, I'm, I'm doing this because I want to be the person that you call when you have a problem at city hall. So I'll be your dedicated candidate, your dedicated council person. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine?
Yeah, I, I intended to devote the time that's required in a responsibility like serving on city council. I currently have a very part-time job. It's like ten, fifteen hours a week. I currently have a very part time job. It's like 10, 15 hours a week at the most. And where I work, it's a wealth advisory group where I had provided advice related to philanthropy and giving back to the community. And they know that this is my intent to serve on city council extremely flexible. My other responsibility is a huge one, which is my son. But he already is used to it. He comes to city council meetings with me sometimes. You know, he knows, and I also believe it's a great example for my son to see his mom stepping up. In a position of leadership to make the kind of change that I want to see for him and his future.
Thank you. Next question. During the next four years, if you're able to accomplish three things that are important to you. What would be your most important goals? We'll start with Catherine.
Thank you. So one would be to continue supporting the dreams for RPS. I do think RPS is on a strong trajectory. Two, we've got to get the Shaco. Park underway, the commemoration of the slave trade in Richmond. Also, we need to focus on our. Let's count four things. The Richmond 300 Master Plan and the James River Master Plan, because those are all revenue generators. And we have got to generate more revenue if we want to solve the issues that we're probably going to be talking about during this whole Zoom.
Tavoris. Thank you, Catherine.
First and foremost. The, I guess I'd approach this question like, what would, how would we know you've done a good job, or what would you see? I guess, and in that's in that aspect, you know. Schools, first off. The school facilities would be completely repaired or with a concrete plan and money in place to repair any fixes needed. New school construction where where it may be required. And also that teachers and other staff are fully funded and 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 more happy in their jobs. Including how much they have to pay for benefits. Second thing, the. Residents going a year, you know, getting their bills on time, not noticing a difference between when they cross city lines into the counties. Or to the county with as far as road quality and conditions. And that people feel safer biking and walking and have an easier time getting around Richmond without a car.
Thank you. Elaine, what are your top three?
You caught me off guard. I'm out of order, but that's okay. I'm ready. So in terms of three things to accomplish, one thing I see as a great opportunity. Is working with our civic associations to rebuild some of the connections between civic associations across the third district. So that we can do more work together as a district and be a better service to all the residents. So I would provide support for, you know, rebuilding some of that team structure and making sure we're communicating across all neighborhoods in the third. I also will be prioritizing Richmond Public Schools and making sure we keep up on funding RPS and the support that's needed for. Ensuring our students are excelling and successful. And, you know, a very short term thing that I'd like to do is address. What is still a really. It's it's between the second and third district, AB Hill Monument is a really dangerous intersection, and we need to take down the monument. I think we need to address that traffic hazard that's.
Thank you. We've been talking about some citywide issues, but what do you currently consider to be the most important issue within your district? And how would you address that problem? Oh, wait a minute, skip somebody. Anne Francis, did you have a chance to? Answer this last question?
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't get a chance to answer. I thought you were asking Willie. So you asking me about what three things?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'm glad that you asked. One thing that I would definitely try to, part of my vision is to have a world class training center in the heart of North Jackson Ward. Folks in that area need jobs and we need to provide the training. So I feel as though a world class training center is something that we desperately need. This is where we can utilize local hiring for training and certification in areas that, you know, some of our kids are not going to college. So let's utilize a skill so they can make money. A training center, definitely somewhere in Battery Park, same thing, have satellite training centers. I'm definitely looking to do a recreation center over in Battery Park. We need to definitely improve the Stone House. That thing is over 40 some years old, and we really need a nice recreation center over in the Battery Park area. That's one concern that I was told that they've been trying to do for the last eight years.
Thank you, ma'am. Willie. What would be your top three goals if you could accomplish things on council?
Just for three, number one will be definitely full funding of RPS. As an RPS alumni and parent, I understand the difficulties of what they're dealing with. But let alone with fully funding schools, fully renovating our schools, especially during this time of COVID, now is the time to go in and fix these older buildings. I think we have builders that probably if they weren't school builders, maybe can dim. So definitely working to renovate and give us better schools. My second one would be to improve our stock of affordable housing within this community. There's a big housing need, and we want to address that. So having a good stock of more affordable housing is definitely one. I think also improving our infrastructure, planting more trees within our community. We have probably the oldest sewage system in the East Coast, whereas that when it rains and floods that we have in our neighborhoods. So trying to improve our infrastructure and improving on the green spaces, you know, making those more available. I think those are the top.
Thank you. You all have addressed some of these, but being more specific, what do you consider to be the most important issues within your district right now? And how would you address those problems? This time, we'll start with Catherine.
Thank you. So I would say COVID is still an overriding issue in our district. Families struggling to deal with remote learning businesses trying to stay open. We've had several close just in the last week. And then people who are isolated at home. So. Recovering from COVID would be one of them, and then recovering from the summer of unrest would be the other one right now.
Tavoris. What do you consider to be the top pressing concerns in your district?
It's hard to narrow down to just one. And I also try to take a long view. So I would still say that schools are the top issue. Because on the long term scale, when we're talking about economic development. Things that you can do to prevent crime and and making better communities in general, it starts with the schools. So I have to say that, but since I have some more time, I would say that doing what we can to mitigate the effects of climate change here. And also fixing City Hall, especially the technology they use to send out bills and to take service requests.
Anne Francis, what would be your top concerns in the third district? You need to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. Okay. Definitely it'd be the pandemic, just like the young lady said, the pandemic is a top priority in the district. A second close to that would be full funding for mental health services. Those effects of the COVID pandemic is something that we really need to look at. We have a lot of mentally health challenges that are going on, and we need the necessary counselors and therapists to address that. I also would say affordable housing ownership. We definitely need to address that, be able to be able to have affordable housing options for those in the community. Since we're landlocked, we definitely should be able to go up. So those are mine.
Thank you. Willie.
I would say probably the number one thing I will focus on. Or more post most important would be. Property tax reform. I think our taxes are probably higher than anybody in this region, and they don't seem to be going down. And we have an issue now. I know a lot of people got in their assessments, and a lot of folks are screaming bloody murder, and I think there's some unevenness in there. I mean, some folks get assessments every year, some may not get them, but every five years. So again, you know, that that program has to be streamlined and work for the folks, because we don't want to force folks out. You know what I mean? So definitely having some kind of property tax reform will be number one issue I think we should deal with.
Elaine.
Well, I think a lot of the issues come under an umbrella of. Lack of trust or broken trust between residents and institutions in the city. So I think that one of the important things to do is to rebuild that trust, be sure that people have faith in. In City Hall and what's happening. So that means being fully transparent with decisions that are taking place. That means being accessible and not just being there, but really including people in the process, making sure that people's voices and ideas are included in City Hall. And I think that repairing that trust will go a long way to. Sharing more ideas for how we can improve services, how we can bring in more public private partnerships to support. You know, additional affordable housing and support for the schools. So, you know, there are a lot of big challenges, but including people in the process, I think it would be a good place to start.
Thank you very much. Next question. Do you support increasing the real estate tax rate in order to support Richmond Public Schools? Why or why not? Start with Travis. Tavoris.
Excellent. So as I said, I figured we'd get into funding mechanisms. No, I don't support increasing the real estate taxes. At this time, especially, I think that it's incumbent upon the city to do a complex accounting of all city departments to figure out. I mean, just three months ago, there was $2 million sitting in an account. And that was from a report from the Inspector General for the city. I'm not saying that we can cover the entire need for the schools through those sort of actions, but they need to get the city, the house, i.e. City Hall, in order. Secondly, I think that we need to explore other funding mechanisms. I think it is possible, especially right now, to talk, to have the conversation with the General Assembly and the state legislators and our delegation to change the local composite index. So we get, we get restored funding from that formula change. And I think the other thing is that the. The the General Assembly seems willing to.
Thank you. Sorry. Elaine.
No, I do not support raising real estate tax rates at this time. We've just gone through so many people in our third district experiencing higher assessments, which is going to result in a higher tax bill. So we just, we cannot consider raising rates right now to support Richmond Public Schools. As Tavoris said, there's, I'm sure, ways that we can find efficiency in the budgeting that's taking place currently at City Hall. We can have more performance based budget measures so that we're ensuring that we're getting what we're paying for as well, so.
Thank you. Willie.
Oh, I would never advocate for a. Real estate tax hike. I think we need to find other funding streams for RPS. Besides going to the state every year and advocating for more money. I mean, to be honest, they're not obligated to do anything for us. So we need to find some other revenue streams. One that we're proposing, which is a split rate tax program, which charges more tax on unimproved properties in these vacant blighted properties. That would actually incentivize folks to build and build homes and housing. That we can actually use that revenue as a revenue stream from the taxes off of that to actually fund the school. So use some other different streams to fund schools, raising our real estate tax. No, it's already high enough.
Catherine.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Anne Francis for calling me a young lady because I'm 46 years old. But I'll take it. No, I do not support raising the property taxes. We're in a pandemic. We're in a recession. We need to be doing everything we can so that people can keep more dollars in their pockets to weather this. This really tough situation we're in. I'd rather see us focusing on growing the economy, getting our businesses back to work. Doors opening. And, you know, we've got surplus properties. That's another thing we could look at, the city selling surplus properties. There are other places to look, not raising the taxes.
Thank you. Anne Francis.
Yes, no, we should not be raising taxes. Again, just like everyone on the panel has said, we're in a pandemic. So raising taxes is not the answer, but there is other funding sources we need to look at and such as. And we definitely need to always look at the mandated requirements that's by the state and the city charter. We need to look at that first and foremost. And from there, there's funding with E rates. This is funding that is through the subscriber fees, and it's given through the federal government where it comes back to the schools and libraries. So there's funding sources out there to help alleviate that system, that problem. And just like Catherine said, the surplus properties, we need to look at those to possibly be able to sell back to the city. And use those funds for new infrastructure and buildings for our schools. So that's what I would my answer.
Thank you. Next question. What are some of the areas of waste and or inefficiency in city government that you would try to improve? What would you do? Elaine.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I think we can be. Holding some departments and offices more accountable by having more clear plans and measurable outcomes so that we can see that. What we're paying for is getting the results that we expect. I think that we can also rely on the resources within the Inspector General's office to help to identify where there is. Whether are opportunities to tighten up practices and to redirect resources to areas that are our priorities, like, you know, Richmond Public Schools and affordable housing. I honestly have to say, like, the city is. There are so many areas of the city that are understaffed and underfunded right now. But if we could be smarter, you know, work smarter about how we're using our funding, I think that would go a long way.
Thank you. Tavoris.
Oh, this is one, this is close to my heart, so I'm gonna try to get it all in. In 2017, the mayor commissioned a performance review that that covered a lot of this. A lot of the waste is coming from core accounting procedures. I worked on accounting software. There was bad implementation there. There's something I want to get my hands on and help fix. The, the, there's bad training all down the line between department heads and management. That's something when it comes to workflow and how to fix those issues, I'd like to be involved in if possible, but. There, actually, and I will add regarding, I'm gonna add some time for the school funding. The General Assembly seems willing to divert some state tax revenue that is collected in Richmond to back to the city. That before they were looking at doing it for bonds for AB Hill, I think they should look at it for schools. And I think that's a big chunk of money that's sitting out there. And if I have more time, I will say that I have a whole section about this on my website. I'm very passionate about it because it, it, you know, that's that sort of base level stuff that's cheap to do, fixing, fixing.
Thank you. Willie.
The inefficiency alone in City Hall are enough of a waste as it is. I think with a lot of the partners that I've dealt with over the years, I've come to understand that a lot of them don't seem to be working together. I think another issue too is a lot of these programs that we have. Funding for like affordable housing trust fund and the tax program. I think there's a lot of waste in those programs that we could trim definitely from. But I think the first and foremost is probably the officer permits. Where everybody seems to have a struggle in the way. So we've actually passed a bill last year that the governor signed. That was supposed to take all the revenue that's generated in the office of permits and go back to improve on hiring and technical improvements. Yet here you are, a year later, and it still hasn't been enacted. As anyone who's been to the office permits knows, it's a waste of time and a lot of money. So that's definitely office that I would look at first and foremost.
Thank you. Catherine.
Well, yeah, I'm kind of going in the same directions as Willie. The idea of wasted opportunities in room 110, the permitting. We have people who want to build affordable housing, saying it's taken them nine months to get their permits, and this is a priority for the city. So I would say wasted opportunity for more economic development because we don't have our act together. I'd also say the James River is a waste opportunity. It's a huge natural resource right in the center verse, you know, in our city, people want to come to. Residents need to have access to that, I think, for our own mental health and recreation. So I would say the way, cut the wasted opportunities.
Thank you. Anne Francis.
A lot of ways that the city of Richmond, being a former employee there, I saw it firsthand, but there's ways to streamline a lot of these processes. One thing is. One thing is, you know, we have to look at city vehicles. Those vehicles are being transported out of city limits for those workers that do not work, don't do not live in the city. There's a lot of waste in that area. There's waste that we need to look at within the police department. But I think the bottom line is communication between the departments and really look at, just like Catherine was saying, opportunities to work with Richmond Public Schools, kind of have a pathway to municipal jobs. There's a lot of temp workers that work for the city. It shouldn't take so much for the city to find good employees. It shouldn't be a long process to get hired within the city. So that is definitely where the waste can be reviewed and evaluated.
Thank you. This can't happen overnight, but what ideas do you have that would result in a significant reduction in the poverty rate within the city? I'd like to start with Catherine.
Thank you. We've got to get a living wage. If you want to talk about getting people out of poverty, you have to pay them the value of their work and their time. You can't have people working three jobs and still not able to pay rent. So lift the wages. Also, we need to have truly affordable housing that's stable and tied to AMIs. So if you want to get people out of poverty, pay them better. You know, affordable childcare is a huge component of this as well. It's hard to go out and do a job if you don't have anyone at home watching your kids. So I think there are very concrete, you know, social justice steps that the city could be taking to lift up all rich vendors.
Thank you. Anne Francis.
Well, for me, it all goes back to systematic racism and the policies that are in place that still disenfranchise people of color to this day. Prime example, Apostle Town over in North Jackson Ward. 293 black homeowners lost their homes to eminent domain and resources in that area have not been put back. So it's about jobs. We have to create opportunities for jobs for our citizens to feel as though they can be, live in the American dream. So with that, you know, I go back to my world-class training center, something where we can offer training certifications, apprenticeships, get folks back to work. That's what's really needed, and that's kind of what's going to tackle the poverty issue. And also access to capital, you know, people need to know about entrepreneurship, having their own business, and having the capital to be able to make something for themselves.
Willie.
I think it all starts with education. I think, well, I believe that every child in the city of Richmond should have a quality education. And I don't think they're getting that right now. So that's a big downfall. I would like to see apprenticeships programs set up, especially through our technical center with a lot of these businesses and corporations where a lot of our youth can actually go into real working jobs that pay a family competitive wage. I think the minimum wage of $15 an hour is sufficient for a single person, but I still think that we need to even increase that more. But we also need to have free access to GRTC so that folks can actually get to work without restrictions or having to worry about that. So some of these things are what we need to do. But it starts with education and teaching our kids that, and I think Richmond Public School does this, and it may be a fault, in my opinion, that they try to push all our kids down a college track when they're all not college material, and they need to understand that there are programs available, that they can actually have a successful career.
Thank you. Elaine.
Thanks. The Office of Community Wealth Building has certainly done a lot of work along the lines of reducing the rate of people in Richmond that live in poverty. Part of the thinking is providing scholarships for high schools, having the future centers at the high schools to prepare students for the next step, whether it be career, college, but ensuring that they're ready for that next step. There's also some great opportunities for not just job skills and employment skills, but also ensuring that there are some, some coaching elements that are tied to employers so that employers are supporting the workforce that's coming from the Office of Community Wealth Building. And then the other part, aside from working and wages, also supporting small businesses, there's also the wealth building aspect that has, that comes through homeownership. So there are a lot of homeownership opportunities, such as partnering with Maggie Walker Community Land Trusts to provide entree and start building family wealth.
Thank you. Tavares.
So the, so as I grew up on free and reduced lunch, you know, I didn't consider, growing up, I didn't really consider our family necessarily poor because we were living paycheck to paycheck. But folks in our family, some of our neighbors, were hoping to get to that place. And that, that sort of what poverty looks like. I think at the base level, the city can get out of the way of folks who are trying to get by. One of, one of the issues I'm passionate about is the water, the water bills. Like our water bills are way too high. We pay too much for our water, and that includes for stormwater utility. We need to figure out ways to mitigate that, especially for folks who are under or near, near or under the poverty line. Longer term, education is the best way. That's how my, my mom went to a community college basically and got, 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 learned how to use the computer basically, and that's, that's when they bought their first home. But that happened much later in my life, but it worked. And I had affordable housing.
Next question. How would you evaluate Mayor Stoney's leadership? What do you think are the most important successes of his administration? What, if any, do you consider to be significant failures? Start with Anne Francis. unmute yourself.
Okay. Mayor Stoney has done some good things, some bad. You know, I can't say that he's the perfect mayor. There is some issues with him, but you know, overall, I feel as though he's doing a fair, just job handling the the civil unrest and ways of removing this Confederate monuments. That was a huge issue where I felt the need that it need, they needed to become down, and I appreciated his decision to have, make it happen. The other thing is, is he's doing something positive about the whole affordable housing initiative, where it's a new tax to help with that. I thought that was a good idea, but some things, how he did handle the crowd and the community. He needs to definitely have more non-governmental allies in his camp to really be able to push things that the citizens need in here in Richmond.
Thank you. Catherine.
Thank you. I do believe that the mayor wants to advance the lives of children in Richmond. That's what I thought. He has been the most successful at, he's had some programs where, you know, the free bus access for high schoolers, the after-school programs for kids. I really feel like when you see him interacting with children, you see why he wanted to govern. The things that I think have not gone well, the Navy Hill project. I think he got caught up in a, in sort of a home run idea project, which had a number of issues that I think were deal breakers to me. And then the handling of the protests, I think. You know, I don't think anyone was happy with that. People supporting Black Lives Matter, people supporting the police, the police, the neighbors. I think that was, you know, clearly a very difficult time, would have been challenging for any leader, but I didn't think it was his best moments.
Thank you, Catherine. Willie.
I think, I think the mayor is doing the best that he can under unprecedented times. I mean, COVID is something that no one had an idea was coming or had experience in. I think that he's been a great advocate for our schools in building three new schools. But again, the Navy Hill project, in my opinion, was a colossal failure that I think he wasted way too much time and energy on. And I think the issue with that was, it wasn't transparent, it wasn't a transparent deal. You know, he didn't have any input from council or community, you know, to actually help him push this deal through, actually make it workable for this community. So I think that was probably the biggest issue. And it was just a wasted, I mean, two-year effort that we could have been focused on a lot of other things within the city and the needs that we have.
Thank you. Elaine.
What I see as one of his big successes and accomplishments is his support for students in Richmond Public Schools. He's been a champion for support, rallying around support for out-of-school time and after-school programs. And that's been really critical for, to the children in the city. Again, with Navy Hill, it was part of the broken trust that I mentioned earlier, I think resulted from the lack of transparency. And just it wasn't, it wasn't a good deal, and the time and energy spent to try to convince the community that it was a good deal was misplaced. I mean, those are resources that should have been used to engage folks at the very beginning before any plans had been put on paper. So that, I think, costs us a lot of time and resources as a community, and then we are going to feel kind of the impact of that with the broken trust when another great development opportunity comes, comes up.
Thank you. Tavares.
Everything Elaine just said, so that saves me time. The, I think the mayor has done really good, again, building schools. He ran on fixing and building schools. He has tried to make efforts in that space. He's actually, I think they put more money, money towards road funding. Some of that was cut from GRTC, so I have some issues there, but they, he ran on it and they're, they're doing it now, sort of. And one of my favorite things is he also ran on a comprehensive performance review, which I keep referencing because and this is kind of where we get into the stuff he's not doing so great in. They commissioned the performance review, and to my knowledge, there was sort of a six-month check-in and then nothing, basically, for the last two years. The the transparency and accountability in all of the things that the mayor has direct control over, department heads, how City Hall is run, what can be changed. You know, the, the sort of nitty-gritty of getting in there and making things work. I don't think the mayor is as interested in, like, he's, he's got a lot of focus on getting money for stuff, but not how it's spent necessarily on the ground.
Thank you. Thank you. So along the same lines, from the Sixth Street Market to the Redskins Training Camp, to the Stone Brewery, to the Navy Hill Project, we've gotten interested in a lot of bright, shiny things that presented themselves as the next miracle cure for the city, and it ended up costing us a lot of money. How do we avoid making that same mistake again? Anne Francis?
Well, as a city council liaison, a former city council liaison, one of the things that was important was feedback from the civic associations. Dr. Kit, you was one of the folks that I actually remember sitting down with and actually listening to the reasons of concerns you had for Ginnor Park at the time. These are things that we need to do more of. I feel as though involving community input should be first and foremost, foremost on any projects that we have. But we also need to refer to the master plan and realize that a downtown infrastructure project is something that's needed. It's definitely something that will address a lot of the social ills we have in our communities, such as jobs and training. So I believe that's.
Thank you. Tavares.
Will you repeat the question for me, at least the last part? I'm sorry.
How do we avoid getting caught up in some of these other similar projects like the Training Camp for the Redskins?
Okay.
Presented themselves as going to be a good thing for the city and ended up not being at all.
Okay. So first off, I think we need to restore, I think it's incumbent upon every elected official to restore trust in Richmond City Government. And transparency and accountability is not just a watchword. You know, what that means is when you want to have a project, you release what's called an RFP, a request for proposal. Basically, you say, here are the things that we want in this project, and then you open it up to a competitive bidding process that is open, as open as possible, and then you get multiple bids. That did not happen in Navy Hill. And frankly, it didn't happen in the previous Boulevard discussion, and nor did that happen in the, when Wilder was mayor, the discussion about the Shaco Stadium. It keeps happening. These things keep happening, and we need to restore trust, put in place a process for these large projects that people can get behind and start, honestly, we, we got to start small at this point because folks aren't going to believe you when you try to show the numbers. You gotta, you gotta give a proof of concept. I don't fully know what that looks like, but that's kind of my approach to how I had.
All right. Thank you. Willie.
Okay. First and foremost, I think we need to put someone in office that we actually can trust to actually do the work of the people and have the people's benefits most in their sights. I would, you want, you want someone who's going to be transparent and accountable to you and is going to do sound policy. And that's the only way that we can actually get that done. I think every one of these deals have been sweetheart deals for the individual who actually proposed it. You know, and I, I agree, we do need some developments, some small developments, especially along Chamberlain Avenue corridor. But some smaller development that actually gives some smaller companies an actual chance to build some wealth for themselves and not be left out the table by these big shiny projects that these different individuals want to propose. So again, definitely having someone in there that you can trust to be transparent and actually do the work for you. You know, and actually have your benefit at their most likely, I mean, at their helm. So again.
Thank you. Catherine.
I would start with community engagement. You know, having been a planner, but then also being president of a neighborhood association that had to deal with a lot of contentious SGP issues in, in planning projects. I feel confident that you can count on me to make sure I'm listening to constituents about what their priorities are. And some of those priorities are being articulated in the Richmond 300 Plan. However, that's such a broad swath, you know, vision for the city. When we start coming down to more finer-grain projects, we've got to circle back and make sure that the neighborhoods and residents' businesses that would be impacted really do have to buy in for these projects. So how would your leaders not get caught up in shiny projects? By remaining in touch with the people that put them in office.
Thank you. Elaine.
I agree. It starts with community engagement. It starts with speaking with the residents of the city about what our priorities are. And it sometimes takes a little bit more time. I mean, and that's appropriate. It's appropriate if we're going to be devoting resources to any kind of development, we got to be sure that it reflects the community's values and what we as residents would like to see happen. An example of that is the plan that has been already developed for the area around Virginia Union and Chamberlain. You know, that was developed back in 2015 with a lot of community engagement, some great historic storytelling around, you know, the, the history of that neighborhood that's valued. And, and it's kind of, you know, it's, it's primed, it's ready, you know, so let's build on some work that we've already been doing before coming up with something brand new.
Thank you. Next question. What is your assessment of the protests that have been occurring this year? What do you feel are some solutions? And what do you think should be the path to helping to repair a lot of the extensive damage? Start with Willie on this one.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
What is your assessment of the, of the protests that have occurred this year? What do you think are some solutions? And what do you think is the path toward helping to repair a lot of the damage that's been done?
I think the protests have been a long time coming. Our country is dealing with leadership that is racist among all the things, and I think this has been a long time coming. I think that our reaction to it hasn't been the greatest. I don't believe that we should be tear gassing and shooting rubber bullets at our citizens. I just don't believe that. I think that the path towards finding an amicable solution to this is actually to sit down at the table and actually have honest, earnest conversation and try to address the issues that cause these protests and these riots, and see how we can meet as a community and actually find some common ground on this. Because this is the only way it's going to happen. Otherwise, we're going to continue to have this every night. But we definitely have to work on improving and reforming our police department because some of their reactions to this protest, I think, has been a little bit too strong.
Catherine.
Thank you. To build on what Willie was saying, if we want to get to the heart of how we're going to repair the damage from the protests, part of that strategy is to keep it from happening again. And if we're not addressing the upstream issues, And if we're not addressing the upstream issues, it, we're just going to be in a cycle of this, especially in a recession, especially when people are cooped up with COVID. So, you know, continuing to support eviction diversion, a lot of the protests had to do, and a lot of the damage, especially down at the courthouse, had to do with the evictions. So that's one area. And then I think we also need to rebuild the trust and confidence with the RPD and the, mainly the youth community, I think. Well, it's not just the youth. Repair trust throughout our community, that's another area of damage. And then, you know, people are very eager to see the next chapter of Monument Avenue, where a lot of the damage was done. Monument, Broad, those are both part of the second district. So it's going to require capital and community investment, but then also, you know, a feeling of optimism that we're ready to move forward, because otherwise, we're going to clean all up, we're going to repair it, and it's just going to get trashed again.
Thank you. Elaine?
So I think that there is definitely an opportunity for a process of reconciliation and healing with the spaces that are along Monument Avenue, and engaging the community in what type of space we would like to see there. And in terms of repair, you know, part of the repair is making sure that businesses can open back up again as well. So there are efforts, such as using the CareX bonds to support businesses that are minority owned, but also businesses that have been impacted by the, the violence, and, you know, whether it's broken windows or fires that have been set. So there are some recovery funds available. We need to be sure that people are aware of it and taking advantage of that so people can get back to work.
Tavoris?
Yeah, I think here it's important for me to say that as, as a black man, as a gay Richmonder, the, my experiences with the police in this town have not been always the best. Now, my personal, in my personal political life, I like, I, I like to think that, you know, that we can make this a better city, a better country, and that is why I've been canvassing for Democrats for 17 years. But I got to tell you, when I do canvass, and especially in some parts of town, and then if I'm canvassing in other counties, you know, I know that I have to dress in a certain way, and that I'll likely be stopped at some point, and, you know, to have ready what I need to say in order not to have a bad interaction with the police. I tell my white friends this, and they don't, they don't have, they don't have those same concerns. So I'm here to tell you that the fear and the anger is very real, and it is, in many cases, very justified. So because the, 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 these, the folks have been asking for a lot of, a lot of this stuff for years. So my assessment of the protests, largely peaceful. I don't agree with property destruction or violence of any kind under almost any circumstance.
Thank you. Anne Francis?
Yes, again, I agree with Willie in what we say. We need to have honest dialogue about the systematic racist policies that have been put in place here in Richmond. Being born and raised here, seeing the, seeing how the city has gone through many changes, we really got to sit down and deal with our past. And the only way we can do that is to have dialogue. And in doing so, we need to talk about these hard issues and these laws and ordinances that are in place that are still disenfranchising the African American community and people of color. So it starts with healing our path from our past so we can move forward as a united third district.
Thank you. Did I get everybody on that round? Lost my place.
I don't know.
Okay. What legislation would you propose to try to help the people who've been hurt by COVID to get back on their feet economically? Start with Elaine this time.
Well, first off, just ensuring that people that are vulnerable remain housed is critical. So ensuring that if there's, if the eviction suspension is lifted, that there are eviction diversion funds that are available and support for people to ensure that they prevent homelessness. So that's, that's one step. But then in further recovery, you know, making sure that we have the safety net supports, whether it be continuing some of the feeding programs and the additional staff benefits so that people can really, you know, make ends meet, just, just get by with supporting your family through this tough time. Hopefully, we will see additional support coming from federal or states as well to supplement what's already been coming down. But we'll also need to be sure, like I said, we get businesses up and running again, but we got to rely on the data of what the infection rates are in our city. We need to be careful about.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yes, so just to repeat the question, it's how we.
What legislation would you propose to help people hurt by COVID get back on their feet economically?
Okay, thank you. One idea, we're very much known for our restaurant scene. Do we need to look at pausing the bill tax? So that would be something concrete and specific that would be legislation I would consider introducing. I think we also need to look at what general obligation bonds we might be able to take advantage of to create new, large projects to employ people, get business going. And, you know, some large, big vision projects perhaps for infrastructure that would help with getting people back to work. So, I'm sorry, we're sort of getting to the point of the night where I feel like everyone's already said all the good ideas. It's harder to build on.
A lot of good ideas.
What we know, what we know needs to be done. But yes, it would be at the top of our mind. Thank you.
Anne Francis?
Yes, my thing would be, as part of my platform, is full funding for mental health services. I think there needs to be legislation to make sure that we have counselors and therapists and those on hand to deal with the, the problem with the pandemic. It's causing a lot of anxiety and issues coupled with the civil unrest that's going on. You know, we're dealing with years of racist policies that have really gone, passed down through generations. So mental health services, I believe, is key and is definitely one of the top priorities that we need to have legislation for.
Thank you. Tavoris?
Yeah, this is a tough one. I've been puzzling over this because we don't necessarily know what, what Richmond or the nation's going to look like after we are, you know, after we're out of the COVID situation. For, in the short term, fully funding the eviction diversion program and finding mitigation for folks who are facing foreclosure or homelessness. And, and then sort of on the medium to longer term, making sure that our businesses get the help they need to reopen, whether that's some sort of financial incentive. Again, I don't know. I don't like to say stuff like this without having a way to pay for it. So I, I don't know what it looked like, but I know that, that one of the things that makes Richmond an attractive place to live are the, are the, is the business community, restaurants, et cetera, that, that, that have opened here, that make people want to live here. There's something to go to near your home instead of having to go to the county. So that's super important. So just know that it'll be prime on my mind. And then secondly, what school is going to look like as well? And then, and also what childcare looks like after this?
Thank you. Willie?
Um, I still think some of this is probably speculative, because we just don't know what the end game will look like when COVID, if COVID ever ends. But I definitely would look into strengthening the CARES Act, especially to assist these businesses and how, try to keep them afloat as much as possible. I think we definitely need to strengthen the eviction diversion program, because eventually these landlords are going to want their money, and their moratoriums are going to run out eventually, and we're going to have more people on the street than we already have. But I think the first and foremost thing is to actually have more funding and legislation for our schools. Now is the time to go into these school buildings, renovate these schools buildings that we have. Get working air, get working hot water, and it's, it's sad that we should say this, but I mean, Montschalgo's Ginnor Park and those conditions that they have. So now is the time to go into these buildings and get them right, because social distancing, I think, is our future.
Question from me, and then we'll go to a couple of questions from the chat box. For about 15 years prior to 16 years ago, so that's several mayors back, we had a system in Richmond called a Teams Process, where each area of the city, like the whole East End or the whole North Side, would meet together, all the civic association presidents would meet together monthly with the person from the planning department who was assigned to them, and they would work together across age and gender and socioeconomics and race to be civic leaders in common to try to strengthen the city. Then that went away. What is your idea about ways of bringing citizens back into the process so they have more of a voice in what's going on? Elaine?
Yes, and that is something that I brought up earlier in our conversation. One of the first things that I shared in, in the, the top three things to do is to really get that process up and running again, because I think it's critical, it's, it's a facet of rebuilding that trust among city and residents, but also building relationships across the North Side. You know, we, we will be stronger when we're working together as a whole district.
Thank you. Catherine?
I would absolutely like to bring the Teams model back. I think it was very effective. People talk about it all the time. And at the same time, though, we need to make sure we're not just, that we're reaching beyond the Teams, because I think, and I'm sure Norma, you would agree with this, sometimes it's the same voices always interacting with our council leaders and with our elected officials. So I need, we need a mechanism where it's really an inclusive process, and that can be things like staggering when you have these meetings. So maybe it's a lunch meeting, maybe it's an evening after work meeting, maybe it's, you know, a weekend morning. So you just have greater access for residents to come hear from their department heads, give input, and feel like your council person is hearing from everyone throughout the district, because we have different perspectives, and they're all important.
Thank you. Willie?
I would definitely advocate for the Teams process to come back. I'm, I think I'm already doing the work of civic engagement and engaging neighborhoods as it is in historic Brooklyn Park Collective. We have senior teams, we have youth teams, we have a garden team, we have music teams, we have several entities that advocate for the community and include the community. So doing that work of actually having folks sit down together is what I want to do. That's the only way that we can actually work and find common ground. I, over the years, maybe once or twice, have actually reached out to some other civic association presidents, just to try to start something like this. But last, I'm only one little person, so I didn't always get a lot of responses from a lot of folks. But again, with the groups that we do have, which is probably about six civic associations within the Brooklyn Park community or area, you know, so that process is something that we're already doing. So we would definitely make that a smooth transition and advocate for that.
Okay, thank you. Tavoris?
Yeah, I, I think, I don't want to, thinking back, it might seem like I'm kind of beating, beating up on city workers especially. I don't, I don't want you to get the wrong idea there. I think that in order to do what was described, the Department of Planning and Development needs to have more staff. I think Elaine mentioned that earlier. There are a lot of departments in the city that are understaffed, and part of that is it's a budget, it's a little budget trick that, that, not just Richmond, other folks do this too, they hold these positions open, and then the money that would have gone to those positions are what they can shift around either in department or to other departments. It's pretty common. I think we need to stamp, stamp that out. But, but this gets to my, one of my big things about process is coalition building, and this is exactly the type of thing that we need to be doing more of and encourage in the city. I think you could do it with an audience, ordinance, but you also need to fund those priorities and make sure the people that are hired are trained properly to, to, to do this sort of community engagement.
Thank you. Anne Francis?
Yes, as a city, former city council liaison, I was very familiar with the Teams process as well as working in intergovernmental relations. One of the things I started was a citizen advocacy program. And back then, we didn't have social media like we do now, and I believe, like, definitely utilizing innovative ways such as social media will help get folks more engaged. That to me is, would be a great solution, is something that we definitely need to come back, and that's where we have those collaborative partnerships. But social media, innovative communicative, communicative ways to reach out, to let folks know about the issue so that our, our leaders can know what to vote for.
Thank you. Now, there are two questions that showed up in the chat box. The first one is, what would be the most important piece of legislation that you would ask our General Assembly members to do for Richmond? Start this one with Elaine.
I, I would start with the funding formula that's used for high poverty communities such as Richmond to increase support for Richmond Public Schools.
Thank you. Catherine?
She hit the nail on the head.
Thank you. Anne Francis?
Yeah, I totally agree. Great on LCI, that's been done, hasn't been looked at since the 80s. A lot of ordinances that were dated before 1970 needs to be looked at. So definitely the local composite index funding is definitely one of those issues that we need to look at. And also, mental health funding as well, we need to look at those variables as well.
Tavoris?
Yeah, ditto, ditto, ditto. But I'll, I'll also say that if, if that's not an option, then the funding mechanism I was talking about earlier, which is looking at allowing this, or diverting state collected tax, sales taxes from especially areas near downtown, where there are a lot of state buildings that we don't collect taxes on, diverting that money to directly back to Richmond City and dealer earmarking it or specifically for schools. And then maybe some other projects in there as well, depending on how much money that, that we'll see from that.
Okay, thank you. Willie?
Yeah, you got me on that one, Tavoris. Yeah, I agree fully that, especially VCU and some of our state buildings that don't pay taxes, we need to have that ability to be able to tax them and pay those funds. We're talking millions of dollars that are just sitting there. If we have to pay taxes, they should too, especially VCU, and that's not a slight against VCU at all, but we have a lot of state entities that don't pay taxes in the city, and it has to change.
Last question, before we get to our close. What do you consider to be possible ways of reducing the crime rate in a significant way? Start with Tavoris this time.
Significant way? Well, this, I've been studying this one as well, and it, it isn't an immediate effect, but schools and jobs are, are the biggest things, and those, those are intrinsically linked. If you have more hope in communities, more, more options for, for advancement, you know, and just, just instilling the, the belief that, you know, a better life is possible, because a lot of folks don't have that right now. And let me tell you, that, that small thing can make the difference in, in a life, and it's made a difference in my life. So, you know, that, that's the biggest way, because while it is true that if you hire more police officers, you do see a slight reduction in certain types of crime, usually certain types of property damage or theft in patrol areas, but when it comes to like the sort of violent crime, that there are deeper issues that, that are involved there, and those are tougher, tough, more tough to tackle.
Thank you. Anne Francis?
Yes, well, first, we need to restore the trust between the police and the community. One effective way that was a great idea, because I'm all about solutions, is to have community coaches. We need to have folks that are familiar with the community, those that can interact with the police, but also they know these young folks who are causing a lot of crimes and can help resolve and de-escalate a lot of social issues. So I think we have some type of community partner inside of the community, having some therapists, counselors, those that can really address the violence and social ills that our communities are facing. So that, that'll be my solution.
Catherine?
Yes, really, we need to focus on the upstream issues, better education, stable housing, food access, and hope. Tavoris, you're so right about that, and that's what worries me the most as we enter this prolonged recession is, you know, we've got to get people focused in a more positive way, especially, you know, within Richmond, because we've had a very trying year. So can we come back together? Can we get excited about the future of Richmond? Can we give people fair wages so they're not struggling and having to make, you know, poor choices? Let's just focus on these upstream issues, because the more you, the more you police, you know, that, that's not the answer. We've got a leaking roof, it's not getting bigger buckets, we got to fix the roof. We've got a leaking roof, it's not getting bigger buckets, we got to fix the roof.
Elaine?
I think we can do a lot of work building on our great youth development organizations that are providing productive training opportunities and ways for youth to discover their skills, their talents, their passions. And once individuals do have that under their belt, then they have a path forward. So again, it comes back to some of those issues related to education and providing other options for people so they can, you know, have a career that they're proud of and have ways to earn family-sustaining wages.
Thank you. Willie?
And we definitely need to go back to community policing. When I say community policing, I mean, what we grew up with was cops walking the beads coming in our neighborhoods, and we knew them and they knew us. And I think that would definitely strengthen a lot of the interactions. But I think first and foremost is education and jobs. I think a lot of the crime is happening because of a lack of opportunity. And folks don't know another way, so they turn to crime. When all they just want is an opportunity. So education and jobs first, foremost. Jobs that will actually pay them a real living wage, that they won't have to do crime. Education and jobs, because people are just hungry, they're hungry for opportunity, and they don't think there's another way. So we definitely have to give them that opportunity and show them that there is another way.
All right, thank you very much. Now, each of you will have two minutes for a final closing statement. We'll start with the candidates from the second district. Tavoris?
Thanks. Thank you very much for having me. I really enjoyed this format. There's so much more I want to say, frankly. I will put my website in the chat. And, you know, I'm pretty open, like, I have my email, et cetera, there. Like, I'd like to talk to anybody who wants to have a conversation, et cetera. And, you know, just thanks for having me. And I hope that you'll consider voting for me either between now and November 3rd.
Thank you. And now there's second district candidate, Catherine?
Yes, thank you for having us. And I too would love to have your vote, whenever it is that you place it. And I just hope you'll consider my background in urban environmental design as we have these master plans that need to be implemented successfully. My background advocating for public school funding. I think that schools have come up throughout this session. So that will be a top priority for me. It's one of the main reasons I'm running. And then, I didn't talk about it a whole lot, but we are in a climate crisis. And I did spearhead the Net Zero 2050 resolution. I know how to get legislation through city council with community support. And I would be honored to represent you guys. I would be your voice at city hall. I would be incredibly present throughout. This would be my number one focus. So thank you for having us. Follow up with any other questions. I'll be at the food truck Saturday night in front of Liz Turner's house. And have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Now our candidates for the third district. Willie? You have two minutes.
Okay, again, I want to thank you all again for having us. Really enjoyed this. Again, I'm running because Richmond is a great place to live, but there are so many inequities within our society. And I just want to be the one to help address that. I want to be there for the people of our community and continue to do the work that the citizens need. I don't think city hall works for the people. And I think that I want to be the person who actually- But just doing the work of community building. I've got relationships with probably every elected official that we have within this area. So I've been already doing some of the work. And I just want to be more transparent and accountable to you and make sound policy decisions. But of course, we would do that as a team and as a community. So again, if you give me the opportunity to work for you, I think we could really have a North Side that we all could see that we would want. And I thank you all again for having me. Y'all take care.
Thank you very much. And Frances?
Thank you so much for having me. It was a pleasure to be here to discuss issues that are important to the third district. I want to invite you all to attend a Listening on the Lawn party this coming Sunday in Ginnipark neighborhood from 3:00 to 5:00. You can email AnneFrancesRun@gmail.com for the location. But I just wanted to say that, you know, my theme is preserving history for future generations. And I am here to say that I am the best and most experienced candidate to represent the third district. Born and raised, I asked for your vote by November 3rd. You can get more information about my platform and be accessible. Any questions you may have, you can go to www.lambertforcitycouncil.com. Again, lambertforcitycouncil.com. And remember, Anne can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elaine?
Thanks, everyone, for participating in this forum. It's been a really great night. I think you probably could hear in my answers that I have a lot of knowledge about the city of Richmond. And I have a lot of passion for making sure that people are part of the process. And I've spent the past almost 20 years here in Richmond building connections between people, building bridges, creating public-private partnerships, all with the goal of everybody using their talents to leverage together to make a better community for all. And through that work in building coalitions, you know, I've had to work with people from all different backgrounds and work through different opinions and differences in how to approach issues. But, you know, I always work to build and find that common ground. And I believe I'll bring that talent to city council because what we need is, you know, to get away from unnecessary divisiveness and create that common ground because that provides the foundation for where we're going to co-create real solutions for the city and create the Richmond that we all envision. So I ask you to consider voting for Elaine Summerfield, Richmond City, Third District, City Council. And, you know, between now and November. And honestly, you know, just get out and vote. So thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. I think we are incredibly lucky to have folks that are so intelligent and creative and committed and hardworking and caring. I think whichever ones of you win, we all win. So thank you so much for being here tonight. We will be having another Zoom forum for our mayoral candidates on Wednesday evening, the 8th of October. So tune in. Y'all take care, have a good evening.
Nora, thank you so much for organizing this.
My pleasure.
Like the most people I've seen.